All right, good morning. Welcome to Commission Sports September ninth. We have a full court present and you certify the meeting was properly posted. If you'll please stand for prayer and pledges.
My father would gather together this morning in your presence with you may that we ask that you lead these gentlemen in the direction that they should go with their good residence of Walker County. Father, we thank you so much for their willing to serve and their willingness to serve. Father, we love you and we thank you for your presence this morning. In First Corinthians, chapter three, verse sixteen, we read, know ye not that ye are the temple of God? And that is the Spirit of God who will attend you. Father, may this verse resonate in our hearts and minds throughout the day that we may remember that we are under your power, we're under your leadership, and you are under your guidance through the Holy Spirit. Father, thank you so much for your presence this morning. In Jesus' name we pray.
No citizens input on agenda items. Concern agenda contains eleven items.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number twelve, discuss and take action on substance of ballistic canine vest. Anonymous donor. That's my motion.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Uh, had a citizen from the community reach out to us, uh, wanted to donate a for canine vest to remain anonymous, uh, in them. Worked with our handler. They worked together on appropriate vests, uh, individuals ordered it, paid for it. Uh, we're just waiting for it to be shipped and arrived, informed to make it, and that's going to work. Proven very much thankful for the citizens that forward.
Yeah, absolutely. We need to definitely tell them from the court that we appreciate it and, you know, he is an officer, the, the canine unit and, uh, uh, definite asset. So I give the judge.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Chief.
Motion carries. Number fourteen, discuss and take action to accept the, oh, no, thirteen, sorry. Thirteen, discuss and take action on resolution twenty twenty-four dash nine seven, Rural Prosecutor Salary Assistance Program.
This is the, uh, we were awarded the grand initiative second year, uh, three twenty-two, and this is the resolution. I should have resident. To mark that, also, it just reminds you again not to reduce our pledge of allegiance to getting this.
Good thing. Like motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Fourteen, discuss and take action to accept the award of the victim's assistance coordinator grant.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Fifteen, discuss and take action on the award of C two, three, six, zero, dash, two, four, dash, zero, one, five. My name right away, I'm Gregory Wayne.
Good morning.
Morning. Sure.
He did a solicitation as requested. Uh, I'm handing out a bid tab, uh, for the vendors and, uh, we had solicited five vendors to give these services off of Burgery Lane. Uh, uh, so. And, um, two responded, as you can tell, uh, we would like to recognize their word. Stan Klawinski Construction, uh, for the Lewis. What I understand, he very capable of doing it, finish the manner, um, with the area.
He's done a lot of them. And they was pretty competitive on the bid one.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Motion. Stan Klawinski Construction, twelve dollars.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number sixteen, discuss and take action on appointment Jerry Ellis or the Bluebonnet Groundwater Conservation Board. That's my motion.
I'll second, two seconds.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number seventeen, discuss and take action on the memorandum of understanding between the Salvation Army and Walker County. That'd be my motion.
Have we talked to him at all?
So we did. They have that little office I called you about. So for us, get their resources during the storms or disasters, they have to have the office here. This year we got, uh, mobile kitchens, foods and all that. So that's why we're redoing it again.
Well, do they have any intent or?
No. Just in case they come here and need it.
I don't have a problem with it. I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where it was from.
I give you shit.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number eighteen, discuss and take action on appointment of local health authority for a term of two years.
This is Dr. Wells?
Yes, sir.
And I called him this morning and he did indicate he was interested in keeping it.
Yeah.
All that good stuff. So I guess you visited with him.
I did.
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your, raise your hand. Motion carries. Nineteen, discuss and take action on directing the salary of local health.
We're just looking at the same. Wish I had some.
He didn't, yeah, I didn't talk salary with him. I mean, I guess you did, right? He's okay with it.
It was staying the same.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Second.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty, discuss and take action to approve Walker County African and funding till the twenty twenty-four Huntsville Leadership Institute for Laura Luca Ferni. That'd be my motion.
I'm gonna give you, well, you got a second, but, uh, have we got anybody in here that's gone through that?
Out, yeah, there you go.
Tell me how beneficial it is. Cause we keep doing it.
It's a good program. I went through it three years ago.
Ally just got done with it.
It was a little hectic this year because there was a change in transition, but it was.
So basically you do learn from it, is what I'm asking.
You, you do. It's a lot of networking within the county. You learn a lot of what the county has to offer. Uh, the people that live here, you get to visit TDCJ, you get to visit, uh, the hospital districts, the school districts.
They get to visit Walker County and the city of Huntsville. They do come here on part of the tour.
And they get to make connections in the county and, and learn officials, uh, and such. I, I think it's very beneficial.
Okay. Well, I was just curious because I mean, we seem to do it, you know, every year somebody goes to it. If we, uh, are learning, I mean, I'm okay with it or not. If we're just going to get away from work, I have a problem with it.
Any other discussion?
That's it.
I got a motion and second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on Texas Association of Counties, Walker County Liability Renewal fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five for Walker County coverage at a cost of two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and one dollars.
Lisa is on.
Lisa's online for questions.
So.
Morning, Lisa.
Yeah, I asked Miss Lisa to be, uh, see if she could fit in, um, today. We went through this stuff and she enlightened me on a lot of stuff. I mean, we were going up whatever thirty-six thousand dollars, I guess.
Yes.
And it, it was kind of shocking to me when I went through all this stuff that we had added eighteen vehicles this year. Um, and I visited with her and she verified all that stuff. Um, we had a lot of stuff that went up, of course, insurance going up. Um, most of it was, you know, reasonable. I, I'd like her to kind of emphasize the cyber stuff, Miss Lisa, if you can, of why, um, y'all split it apart.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, yes. So this year we are offering the cyber coverage as a standalone coverage effective October first for the pool. And so now you will see that breakout and that is the twelve thousand, one hundred, one dollars. Uh, formerly that was under the public officials coverage, the public officials liability coverage and was at no charge to our members. Um, so that's, that's your largest increase that you're seeing on the renewal. Uh, same coverages, uh, your limit this year under the cyber, it will be five hundred thousand. Um, each year we will evaluate that based on the questionnaires that are sent out to our members. If increased limits are available and the county is interested in increasing those limits. Uh, the other, uh, increases were due to the auto and auto physical damage. Um, as comming liability, there was eighteen vehicles added. Uh, so that exposure has increased and the auto physical damage, fifteen additional, uh, vehicles added.
And I'd like to elaborate on that just a minute, Miss Lisa. So.
Uh huh, yes, sir.
Um, we've got a pile of them that need to come off. That I'm assuming. So we hadn't had a sale in a long time and we're paying the same for these old junk ones as we are the new ones, uh, especially on the Tahos that most of them are sheriff's department vehicles. Um, that are sitting back there. They're stripping them and using them for parts, but we're paying almost half of what it went up in insurance every year because them vehicles are sitting back there. So, uh, I, I, I guess, Miss Cheryl, we need to have a sale because this, this would take a lot of this or some of it off. Um.
That we normally reduce those vehicles to, uh, liability only, especially if they're sitting there. I know that ambulances that are there, that's what we've done. Is, is reduced, you know, took the full coverage off and just, you know, by chance it's all goes through and in or whatever. Liability is the.
Yeah.
Is what we have tried to do. And yes, sir, we, I think we're up to twenty-one vehicles now that we do have, uh, ready for auction.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I didn't, I, I talked to Chief White Cotton a little bit about it and he run me some of the tags and some of them still we're paying full insurance on. And, and like I said, I didn't know, uh, that part of it, but.
I'll check that.
You know, if it's still going to be a while for a sale, maybe we need to get the majority of them dropped, uh, liability.
Yeah, and we can, but just if we're still in possession of them, we've kept insurance on it. So if they well, we'll, I'll get with Cheryl with that.
Yeah, for, I mean, and that's just more reason. Uh, he, they've got, and I think there's ten back there plus two ambulances and, uh, you know, all the other stuff that we've got. I know I think you got one or something. You got a couple of trucks, ain't you? You're gonna turn them in.
I got, they ought to be, uh, uh, cause they're not drivable.
I got two, two pieces of equipment.
Get them off the insurance until it's sold.
But it's even like the, I, I think we got to keep insurance on them. Yeah. Even that old green haul truck that I kept, I mean, we're paying insurance on it, you know, of course, we're still dealing parts off of it, but, um, a, a, a lot of the stuff that we're not and it's been used up, we need to do something with, you know.
Look at that then.
Yeah, so. That was all.
I got a problem with that.
Yeah, that was all on that one. Uh, I think the other one was on the judges, right? Yeah. So, uh, anybody got any questions?
No.
I, I'll make a motion. We accept number twenty-one with increased to forty-two five oh one.
Second.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-two, discuss and take action on Texas Association of Counties Liability Renewal for fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty-five for the twelfth and two seventy-eighth Judicial District footage at a cost of eight thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Ally said, uh, sent us in the email that it went up five thousand. I can, I asked Miss Lisa and she, uh, didn't know off the top of her head, so I was gonna get her to explain why it went up so much.
Yes, and that is also the cybersecurity standalone coverage. You're seeing the five thousand dollars there for that increase.
Good enough. Question?
No.
I'm like a motion. We accept number twenty.
I'll second that. Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Miss Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, Judge Christian. Y'all have a good day.
Twenty-three, discuss and take action on this, this true, this distribution of unclaimed capital credits in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-three cents. So we got our check in. Uh, we had allocated some of that for a time to read.
And safe house.
And safe house.
Okay.
So we'll make up the difference out of our general funds out of regular budget. We're all good with that.
I'm fine with it.
So we'll deposit that in general funds. That'll be my motion.
I'll second that. You know what? I better not second that.
Yeah, you're on safe house.
I'll second that.
Moved, moved and seconded all in favor, raise your hand.
I'll be present and not voting on that.
Motion carried one, present not voting. Twenty-four, discuss and take action to add additional money to FEMA line item for each precinct.
Yeah, I don't know about y'all, but we're getting close to the point where you're gonna probably need to put some more money in there to buy the materials with. Where y'all standing, Brandon, y'all?
I'm over it. We're about, we're about a hundred and twenty-five thousand over it. Uh, um, we're taking about sixty for a finish. At about around one eighty, it's like five to.
So like maybe two hundred, something like that would probably work. Y'all okay?
No, I mean, I, I, we're hitting pretty hard right now. So whatever we say.
I would think two hundred and come back to court if we need more.
I'm okay with that.
You okay with that?
I think that's gonna finish me.
Okay.
And we're gonna pull it out of the.
Where we been getting it from, Patricia?
Yeah, one, one thing we might, uh, do is do a recap of what's spent on what project. And then we may can set up some receivables for the FEMA, FEMA money in the budget. So I have a little bit of time to look at that.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
And then I'll bring back.
Long as you don't cut us off. Long as you don't cut us off.
Not gonna happen.
All right, so we can ba, uh, pass on this till you come back or?
Oh, you're breaking the break.
All right, let's just make a motion to approve two hundred extra, two hundred thousand extra.
For precinct. Second.
Moving seconded on favor, raise your hand, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-five, discuss and take action on making changes to Walker County Personnel Policy Manual.
Yeah, after last court, visiting with Miss Cheryl and you and us and everybody else, I got with Amy's office and we basically, uh, come up with a, do y'all have a copy of three sixteen? Everybody got one? Okay. You got one, Dan? And we come up with adding a sentence on, on number two in the sentences. This also includes obtaining insurance inspection, registration sticker, license plates on all county vehicles. Uh, since I've been here, we've had, uh, three other purchasing agents. I think we had Miss Linda McKenzie, we had Mike Wilford, Charleston, and nobody else ever had a problem getting it done. It's always been in that office and these stay central located as far as I'm concerned. You know, I don't know how y'all feel, but the insurance needs to be under that office too. I know at one point we moved it to your office. And, uh, it's really not, shouldn't be in the judge's office. Let me put it that way. It should be centrally located. And I know why we did it. Don't get me wrong. There was, there was a reason we moved it. But all that should be in Miss Cheryl's office. I would think that if you needed an employee, I mean, we just went through budget. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where my thoughts are. We just went through budget on this. So, uh, I don't have any negotiations on this at this point after the last court. So, you know, I kind of take the same approach that our US government takes when we deal with terrorists, uh, no negotiations at this point. So my motion is to make this approved. Approval on number two, adding the sentence that I just read that's in this backup. So that it leaves the responsibility with that office. And if she needs help, she needs to come back to our court. So.
Second.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand.
That's where I stand.
Motion passes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Twenty-six, discuss and take action, make changes to Walker County Purchasing Policy and Procedure Manual.
Uh, that was added just in case I had a different spot to put this, so we can pass on that one.
Twenty-seven, discussing, uh, and presentation by Jordan Mahoney of Grant Works on Completion of the Construction Administrative Closeout Procedures with Timeline for GLO Harvey Infrastructure Contract Number twenty dash zero, six, five, dash, one, oh, four, dash, C two, seven, nine.
One of them. That's too long.
It's okay.
Good morning.
Nice to see you all. How about launching in like a year? Um, it's surprising to me also every time this comes out, I was just thinking a long, a long version, short version of that story at the end. But mostly I'm here today to say we finally finished this project. This included twelve construction projects, um, across four different precincts. We had an original budget of four million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Uh, we had three amendments. We had two contracts. Allocation of a hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and one dollars, bringing our total to four million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. Uh, we had two budget adjustments and we had a monitoring which meant, which came back with a bonkers result. We had to fight for eight months in order to make sure that the county wasn't administrated, being penalized. It's been a journey. So. Yeah. So excitingly though, that part is now done. We had our final, um, construction, uh, site complete. That was the creek flood gauge that was completed on eight twenty-eight, um, thanks to our engineer, Johnny Green, um, hounding on our supplier who was over a year late in completing that project. But it is now done and within the timeline. We had until September thirtieth to get that officially finished and that was giving everyone significant heartburn and I guess maybe by everyone, I mostly. Uh, now we are in the administrative closeout phase, which is hopefully for you, just me emailing you for signatures. And we have about, uh, eighty days from today. We have sixty, sixty days after the construction, excuse me, the contract end date to get together all of the paperwork and make sure it is pristine. I will be spending most of the day with Ally here, making sure that the onsite file is beautiful for when the GLO comes to inspect it at the end of this month. Um, our GLO Grant Manager Gabby, uh, gave me a very kind heads up that she's going to be coming at the end of this month to go ahead and inspect that. So I had the opportunity to come early and make sure that it's pristine. Now the, I know that the electronic file looks great, but we do have to make sure that the onsite file is in good standing. So the steps toward closeout from here. Please go through to interrupt me with questions. Um, are to submit the final project engineering invoices. We have about ten thousand dollars left for construction reimbursements for that flood gauge. Um, we couldn't pay it until it was expelled to the GLO. Well, um, engineering has about twenty-four thousand dollars left on their invoices, our Excuse Me, Mount in their budget to invoice and administration. My team has about twelve thousand dollars left. Uh, we will have used one hundred percent of the funds. Um, and while we originally had an overage of about a hundred sixty thousand dollars, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, we had that hundred and six thousand dollar allocation of additional funds midway through the, well, midway earlier this year. Um, so our construction overage was a little less than thirty thousand dollars. We have twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Darn good for a four and a half million dollar project, if I do see so much so. Um, as far as how long it has taken to get you the reimbursement for work completed in June of last year, would you like the short version or the long version?
I, I lived it.
Okay, it, it is a very, very complicated project, uh, which we just can't do more than one thing at once. Unfortunately, working with the GLO is a lot like working with the D O C. It's not a super speedy process. Um, and while we have one thing processing, we can't even prep the next thing for processing. So at no point was it on my desk giving me heartburn for weeks on end. But this is gonna be closing out on time, which we're very excited. I know the county also has two fresh grants coming in. Unfortunately, we haven't seen those contracts yet, so I don't have much, much to comment on that. We should see those letters, uh, excuse me, not letters, but actual contracts coming out with the next allocation from the GLO. Hopefully.
When is it?
Yeah, yeah, they.
At least some of them we got started on this one. We can't even start it on.
I'll tell you that.
Uh, next December.
Yeah.
Not this December.
It'll be this fiscal year. That's, that's about as precise as it is. I'd be surprised if it took longer than January, but they surprised me before, so.
Which January, though?
Yeah, exactly.
But we're very excited that it is gonna finish out on time. We're not gonna have to deobligate any funds and the county has absolutely no monitoring findings after our long and arduous battle.
At least we'll get this one out of the way.
We'll get it out. And the other ones look so much simpler from here. This was, this was a beast of a contract.
You gonna guarantee that?
No.
I'm gonna help her answer. No.
Yeah.
Two companies at the same time, two different agencies.
Yeah.
So programs will be similar enough to confuse them. It'll be fun.
We appreciate all y'all's help.
You betcha. You'll see me a lot more as we start up those next two contracts, but hopefully for a while it'll just be emails. You've been great. I'm so sorry for all of the deluge of emails in the last couple of months, but it's all worked out.
That, that money was, you know, we.
That we ain't got yet. Yeah, that's ours.
Trying to remember what happened two years ago.
Oh, yeah.
We ain't forgot about it, Brendan.
No, it's still on our mind on this.
If there's gonna be any rounding errors, it's gonna be in my favor. I'll tell you that.
One or two cents. Well, do any of y'all have any questions for me?
No, ma'am.
No, just thank you for coming.
Thank you, Jordan.
Be safe going in.
Number twenty-eight, discuss and take action on Terry and Alma Fraser's request for variance to sections three point three six of the Walker County Subdivision Regulations waiver to requirements under section two thirty-two point zero zero three two subsection A of the Texas Local Government Code based on the credible evidence of groundwater availability in the vicinity of the proposed subdivision, plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero two Jones Road Ranch Equestrian Estates.
So. Sorry for the long.
That was good.
But in order to grant variance to our policy, the state code, we're having to find a waiver. The waiver, you know, places based on what walks, less, uh, ten or less. Um, and they provided this report from AGS along with letter of, uh, review by Bluebonnet and are asking the court to accept that. Um, and grant a waiver department under the state code and a variance person.
And it's a very small subdivision, what, sixteen acres or something?
Yeah, four.
Four lots, yes.
Actually have it on the next slide.
Yeah, I, I read through that thing last night and it was very lengthy.
The only, the only, uh, the only condition that normally the court has placed on these is if there's a recommended well that, that be included in the overall that's up to the board, not required to.
And that was the.
That was, we've had done that in the past.
That was the three hundred inch.
Yeah, yeah, this particular one was recommended.
Yeah, and, 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 which I know I bring it up all along, but how in the world would you regulate?
I think the reason the court normally has recommended that would be placed on the plat in the past is to put the information out there where it needs to get successful.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they get out there and they drill the shallow wells and they cause problems in the area, then the recommendation from the court was was on the plat.
And the owners can also include that, I would presume, and disclosures and that maybe even their, um, their, uh, uh, restrictions.
Yeah.
Okay, so my motion is gonna be to approve the request for variance to section three point on three six of the Walker County Set of Raisings Regulations and waiver weigh the requirements under section two thirty-two oh thirty-two of the Texas Local Government Code and include, uh, the well depth recommended atation on the plat.
Check. Did I get it off? I think so.
You want to put a?
That's my motion.
Three hundred. Say three hundred.
Three minimum.
Where the, it was three hundred? Yeah. Well, up to three hundred.
I'll second that. Well, the interesting part is, you know, if you're a well guy, you realize three hundred don't work. It may be three sixty, three ninety, five hundred, but.
Yeah, that was the minimum well.
Okay.
All right, moving second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries twenty-nine, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero one two Jones Road Ranch Equestrian Estates.
Because of granted, I've seen my variances previously. We don't have any additional comments other than if we will be contingent of the whole company.
So while we're here, before court, uh, legislature starts issue.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we need to lean on our newly elected, uh, representative to somehow get this back in front of, uh, it's, this is a mess.
Yeah.
You know.
I planted a seed.
Yeah.
You need to plant a tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this, this is gonna cause lots of problems. And, and it's us, it's basically got us going against recommend. Yeah, previously, every commissioner's court had the ability to adopt it if they wanted to. They also had the ability to grant variance.
Yeah.
This sort of changed that process. You can grant a variance, but only under the structure of the state law and with the conditions.
under the structure of the state law and with the conditions that the states impose. Hopefully they can get it fixed. I doubt it.
Well, you know. The, the bigger subdivision, and we may need to put something in our policy if we haven't already done it, uh, to kind of take care of the little guys, but the bigger subdivisions need to do the study.
Oh, yeah, I don't disagree with that.
They, they need to do that entire study and be done with it.
Yeah, the policy currently requires that the study be done.
Yeah.
Only way out of it is a waiver or variance. It used to be a variance and anybody could apply for variance. Now it's very limited who can apply for variance because they have to qualify for the waiver.
Yeah. Okay, well, maybe that takes care of it then.
So my motion is gonna be to approve the, approve the plat uh with adding the recommended uh minimum well with a three hundred on the plat. I'll second that.
Moving second to all, favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Oh, executive session, public comment. Mr. Middleton, Tommy Middleton. Here. Good morning.
Good morning.
You'll get, you'll get five, you'll get five minutes and we can't respond to, to you.
Okay, I, I, I can probably do this in five minutes.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So, uh, first thing I can say is I'm not a public speaker. Uh, I'm Tommy Middleton. I live at thirty eight eight Chandler Road, precinct one. Uh, I'm a lifetime member of the NRA. Uh, I'm not against owning guns or shooting guns. I'm here to talk to you about making some laws in Walker County against shooting gun in areas that have a high density of population. Uh, this is not the Wild West anymore. Uh, we have a lot of subdivision that are out of the city limits in the E T J D. As I understand, the E T J D it is to uh prepare for growth. And uh, I think that we, as a county need to address, I, I live in the community of Brad's Prairie. I was the second person that lived on that road. There may be twenty five or thirty, twenty, twenty five residences there now. Uh, within a two mile circle of me, there's a lot of people. Uh, I have a lot and enforcement coming out of the shooting in my neighborhood. A situation has gotten better. Uh, in the recent because of, uh, how much time I gotta say?
Three minutes.
Uh, domestic issues, I think, in my neighborhood have caused some of the shooters to be put away. And then when you put them away for a short period of time, you lose your right to own gun. My shooting has gone down considerably. But uh, my problem is back. So I have, on, on Sunday afternoon, uh, ac- across from my house, uh, here two weeks ago, there were thirty shots. I'm riding around looking to see where these shots are coming from. Uh, it's scary. Uh, I just think that at some point we don't allow shooting in the city of Huntsville, do we? We shouldn't allow shooting in high density populations where we are in the E T J D. Because we are preparing for the city to possibly move forward. We have a lot of subdivisions, uh, Timber Wall, Sterling Ridge, Wood Lodge, Canyon Run. Uh, and, and, and if I lived in, at Elkins Lake, I would be concerned because a grand parkway that is uh gonna be right behind me and they are in the E T J D, they're also not required to not shoot. So from this day forward the commissioner's court will always say, be able to say that we were presented this problem. Uh, if your Uncle Phil or my Aunt Sally gets shot through the wall, we're all gonna bear responsibility. So I would like for the commissioner's court to consider some sort, and, and I know that uh we have state owned, uh, national forests, all of that's gonna complicate the issue. But uh, in certain areas where the population is we need to place some gun laws, shooting restrictions.
Yep, thirty seconds.
I, I also would like to say that able guns and ammo I know is possibly even in the city limits and their grandfather, they're shooting, they're responsible people shooting in a responsible way, in a responsible place. And when you're shooting in my subdivision, I don't think that you're necessarily shooting in a responsible place. You need to go to a gun range. I'm a lifetime member of Madison County Gun and Archer Club. I shoot up there every week. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. And questions from media? Commissioner's Court.
Well, I, I just say this for y'all's benefit, don't use the Valero's with a Valero card right now because they are stealing your information. My wife was a victim. Be cautious. And the interesting part was it was in the city limits and the city police department wouldn't take the report on it. So thankful our sheriff's department did. So I can get that off of my credit. Be cautious.
Yep.